Okay, I'll call this meeting to order at 5:30. The first thing on the agenda is a public hearing. So, make a motion to open the public hearing.
I made a motion to open the public hearing for the purpose of accepting unanticipated funds in excess of $5,000 per RSA 31-95-B3.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'll be in second.
Very good. What do they give me?
In November of 2011, a $25,000 gift was given to the school to create the Everett and Barbara Blakely Athletic Fund for scholarships. The trust fund from which that came is known as the Barbara Jean Clay Revocable Living Trust, which was subsequently amended to be Irrevocable. Based on a court order, the trustees, surviving trustees petitioned the court to have this trust dissolved and the remaining funds to be distributed to the beneficiaries. So, on the basis of court order, we have received a check for $13,507.96 from the Barbara Jean Clay Living Trust to be deposited with the trustees and added to the Everett and Barbara Blakely Athletic Fund for scholarships.
You're good.
And that will dissolve the fund, that'll be the final distribution from that trust, and it'll just be added to the scholarship fund if you so do that.
Okay, that's great. Okay, any questions? Hearing none.
I'd like to make a motion to accept a $13,507.96 funded distribution from the Barbara Jean Clay Living Trust, directing at the amount to transfer to the trustees, the trust funds, to be added to the Everett and Barbara Blakely Athletic Fund for scholarships.
Do you hear a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing and remain reconvening the regular board of directors.
A second? Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, next thing, public input.
I have, of course, many.
Of course.
Of course. I was following up with the last board meeting about the 10 freshmen that didn't have enough credits to go to sophomore year. I know we're working on it as a district, but as the fourth highest paid high school in the state of New Hampshire, how do we rectify the situation where we have the staff, we're paying them a large amount of money, and we have 10 that are still not going to sophomore year? I know changing maybe the scheduling is your answer.
So, can I talk to that?
Sure.
Yeah, when Heidi's finished, Heidi's finished.
Yeah, I just, I don't understand that whole thing.
Okay, maybe Jenny can clarify.
So, can I just clarify, because I had to come back and talk to, I don't want to be on camera though.
Well, you can.
You don't get that choice.
So, we talked, and some of that, it's, what is required for them to be full sophomore status is six credits, but all in the core. So, if they missed one core subject, they could've earned six credits, six, whatever it might be, six and three quarters. But because they have not earned all four credits, they're repeating that course. So, over the summer, they were given the opportunity to do so, and some chose not to.
Okay. But my point being, and it has nothing to do with you being in the position you're at today, it has to do with, I guess, the SAU, that we pay our high school staff, we're the fourth in the state highest paid high school, and we cannot even get our kids to pass to go to the next grade. We have these high educators up there teaching our children because we pay them one of the top schools salary-wise. What are we doing as a board and an SAU to fix this problem?
Are you directing it at us now, or you want your own?
Yeah, Jenny answers my question. I mean, she knew at this, but this isn't her problem right, it is now.
Yeah, I don't know the history of this, and that was.
I mean, an average student to go there is $23,000 a year.
Yeah, we don't take into account the money we bring in. Like, I, when I visited the CTC classes today, we had 120 students attending from other schools too, so I might point out that's a bit unusual as well. You know, I think that, you know, from our perspective is we hire the best leadership and the best teachers that we can, and we start looking at working on our curriculum. We've all, we've, we've looked at three big priorities this year that I outlined with the staff and faculty a couple of weeks ago. And I think that, you know, if we do, if we do a better job of tightening up the curriculum, making clear what students should know, when they should know it, and put the correct interventions in place, that will, that will help. You know, I think that there's, there's a number of factors there. I agree that having, having any student not passing is a concern. I also will point out, though, that, you know, that we want students passing, but we want them showing evidence that they've learned also. And, you know, we could fix this problem really easily by lowering expectations, but I think we need to raise expectations if anything. So, I think, you know, from that, from that standpoint, our, our job is to hopefully get the right people in place and keep positions and support them with the programs that they need to have.
But are we hiring people without the certification too? And then they have a certain period of time to get a certification?
Uh, there's a teacher shortage.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's that simple. It's a good thing we have a, the salary schedule that we have, or we would, we would have even, even more of that. But that's, that's not an unusual circumstance, hiring people, you know, hiring people that need to complete some certification.
So, if you're looking at, as my point of view, as a parent, as a taxpayer, as the high school, you're an average of 200 and, I don't know what your enrollment now is, 200 and something, that's about $14,000 more than most of the districts per student. So, that's a couple million dollars to run that. And, I mean, what are, there's something missing with this piece of puzzle here.
Well, yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to just shift in, historically, the freshman year, not just at Littleton High School, but high schools around the country has been a challenging year for students, coming from middle school to a high school. And we're fortunate enough that we have a middle school, and obviously now we're sharing the same schedule, so I think that's going to help. But I know in some schools, moving to a completely different high school is really challenging. It's the first time you're keeping track of credits to move to the next grade.
Right.
And that's kind of artificial, too. But I would like to focus on our graduation rate, which is like a hundred percent. So, some of these freshmen may be off track, but we get them back on track. We get them caught up.
But we have the charter school and the academy to accommodate these ones that aren't having enough credits to go on to sophomore year. Do they fall in that category to send them to the charter school or to the academy?
Sometimes.
Okay.
Sometimes.
And I think, I think this year's schedule too will allow, because the schedule has to provide time for intervention. So, I think now with the past time in the schedule, being able to capture that student who's struggling earlier and provide them more support.
But then it goes back to that student that loses 60 hours of educational time in a calendar year by doing this new schedule. It's 60 hours of educational time.
No, it's increased, so all that intervention enrichment is learning time, that's educational time.
No, I don't think so.
I think.
So, last Wednesday, my child had math for the first time. She is not going to have it again until tomorrow. How can that be learning math?
She heard it today.
Today?
Yeah.
Okay. No, last Thursday or whatever. So, she won't have it again until tomorrow. So, you're, you're missing day-to-day education on something that a child could struggle with, like math, if that child, that child doesn't have it for two days or a whole week.
But they get that opportunity in the intervention times during the past time as we progress through.
Okay.
So, that, you've got this week as mentor, more of a mentor bonding, and then next week starts starting interventions and interventions.
That's right. I just, I'm just.
Yeah, those are good questions. I think it's important to point out, though, the old schedule, the student, you know, they might have math every day, and then they may not have it for another year and a half. It's possible. So, I think, you know, the fact is.
Yeah, well, this semester, they might have it first semester freshman year, and then not till second semester sophomore year.
Right, this helps a little.
Not saying that that happened, but it was possible. I think the other thing that Jen pointed out is that we did offer summer school, we'd offer a program that's built on taking students, diagnosing students, the outcomes that they're missing, the content that they missed, and giving them the opportunity to make up those credits.
But they're in the freshman class this year.
Well, they didn't make up the credit.
Right. Because it'll be a whole year.
There's someplace, there's got to be some student choice and responsibility, and parent choice and responsibility here as well.
And next year, they may be juniors.
But isn't that, shouldn't that be the district's responsibility to not let them fall through the crack and say, this is it? Or you go to the charter school, or you go to the academy?
Sure. But at the end of the, at the end of the day, the student makes a choice whether they go to class, do the material.
A student that's not.
And even if we go into the summer.
A student has that choice, the adult and the.
We, we do everything we can, Heidi, but ultimately, you know.
Okay, it's a dead issue.
Yeah.
It's a dead issue, because I don't agree with you, because it isn't, shouldn't be, just like the dress code, it's not the child's decision, it's the adult's decision. And if they don't have an adult in their life, it should be the staff. That ball was dropped, that those 10 students didn't have enough credit.
They, they failed the classes, they were.
They failed the classes, but we did nothing to encourage them or follow through with them to get those credits before the school year started.
You did, there were interventions throughout the year, some have alternative options.
And it happens every year, this happens every year.
Well, let's see what, let's see if we're having this conversation a year from now.
Okay, I will go back to the records and find out.
We'll see how, we'll see how well the interventions work.
Okay, thank you.
Right, but the thing is, we're not doing the same thing we've been doing. You just said that this happens every year, or?
I did not say that. I said, I want to know if it happens every year. But as being paid the top four, the fourth highest paid school in the state of New Hampshire, it's pretty sad that we have 10 kids when, I believe that's 20% of that class of sophomore year. So, it's pretty sad. You know? I mean, it's no different. You're in charge, you should, you should be on top of this. And I'm not pointing fingers or anything like that, but the SAU is the highest level in this district. Years before, we weren't, we didn't have an SAU.
What?
We, we were with Profile and Litman.
Still holding SAU.
Right, I know, but we didn't have our own. So, I mean, it could eventually go back to that, so.
More money.
All right, anything else? Next on the agenda is approval of minutes for August 21st.
So, who?
Second. Any errors, corruptions, or omissions? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The manifest is done by Mr. Cook, I think he signed. The next thing on the agenda is that we have a school town work session on September 13th at 10 o'clock here at the SAU conference room, which is held between the school and the town and the selectmen and the rest of us. So, anybody would like to join us?
What's that?
Nobody.
Is that 13, you said, and is, are we all attending?
If you want to.
Oh, so it's whether you want or not.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we're going to be discussing the budget and so on, and the finances, whatever.
And, yeah.
Yes.
Within the manifest tonight, you'll find a rather large check for Stiles Fuel.
Yeah.
As we've been doing some cooperative efforts, Karen Noyes did all the bidding for fuel this year. I can't tell you how grateful I am that she did all that work for us. And we're taking, obviously, working together, they're able to take advantage of our volume for the town. But she did all the background work, and I really appreciate all of it.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, unfinished business, update Safe Roots to School project.
You guys have a document of all the photos, courtesy of Alex, that he took with his drone, that kind of shows the completed project minus the grass that still hasn't grown yet, but just wanted to give you the update that it is completed.
Well, not totally.
Well, with the exception of the lights that are supposed to have.
The crosswalk lights aren't up yet, but, or the lights out back.
They were shipped, well, actually, those were supposed to be up Friday.
They weren't, so the contractor.
Doesn't say they put those up?
Yeah, the same group that was there will come back.
Okay.
They thought that they would be there the first day of school, then they weren't, and then they said the Friday, and they weren't there Friday. So, I haven't heard about the crosswalk lights, but I know that the lights in that patio area, the loop area, were shipped September 1st with an install date estimate of the Saturday after Labor Day. So, I'm hoping that by the end of the week, the weekend, that all of that will be completed.
You know what kind of lights there are, the ones at the crosswalk?
There are the solar lights, and that was a big conversation with Chief Smith, because the solar light that he put on the light poles in our grayer and dinnier weather months, didn't, they didn't hold the charge, and they didn't get enough sun. So, the jury's still out on that. There may be the potential need to hardwire them, but the contractor said he was very confident that lights are under warranty, and they were warranted to be able to stay lit in this area of the country, so it's a shot fired out.
I'd just like to add something to the Safe Roots to School project. This was a grant written by two parents in 2009 for sidewalk construction and crosswalk change. It was submitted to John Kerrigan, who is the Safe Roots to School Coordinator at the New Hampshire Department of Transportation. On August 8th, 2011, Littleton was awarded $206,680 for sidewalk reconstruction and traffic calming. The design was done by the New Hampshire DOT engineers, and the money for that project comes from the feds, to the New Hampshire Department of Transportation, to the town. The only thing that the school had to do was to sort of co-sign with the grant process, I guess. So, it's not our money, it comes from the town. I don't know if we've got the $206,000 for the law or with us at this point in time, because it's been about eight years, just trying to clarify the situation. There are, this building business, mayor reports and personnel.
We're just hoping to get the, I'm working on the MOU, get that signed.
Non-public?
Yeah, non-public, yes.
Okay. Facilities, have you had meetings since?
Nope. We just have an issue with our air conditioner, Jim.
Cafeteria.
Cafeteria.
Yeah, Jim's good.
Yeah, thankfully.
Jim was cold yesterday, and today.
Policy, we haven't had another meeting. Now, I understand that there's, from the New Hampshire School Boards Association, there's some technical advisories coming out on some of those policies, it's in the memo today. Okay, superintendent's report?
Okay, just a, just a few items. Started school year, we're off to, I think, a good start with teachers coming in week before last, of course, students here last week. I think a lot of people comment on the schedule, they liked it, they liked the three-day week with the kids. I was talking to some of the kids today, they, they liked the idea of doing that more often. You know, pointed out, we have, we have to get to the magic numbers somehow, so we probably can't have three-day weeks as a, as a regular, but it was nice. I think that, I think that with the two weeks, with the teachers, or the teachers coming the week before, and the way this schedule was scheduled, or the calendar structure, I think it worked fairly well. We did a survey of teachers and staff back when we were there all together in that, in that August. I asked them four simple questions, and I think that when you start looking at improving and school improvement, and, and looking at numbers, data, data is important. We established some baselines, whether we're looking at the issues that Heidi brought up, and then looking at the historical issues of, in this case, students that didn't earn enough credits to go from one class to another. But the data, the data we collected are bigger, bigger, broader questions, and I asked, I asked basically four questions. Question one, the priorities of the school PK to 12 are clear. 10.9% strongly agreed with that statement, 71% agreed, 11.4% disagreed, and 1.7 strongly disagreed. Question two, a well-defined curriculum of competencies and indicators that clearly defines what every student should know and when they should know it exists in my school. That's, that's, that's the heart and soul of a socioemotional education. 13.5% strongly agreed, 52.6% agreed, 30.8 disagreed, and 3.1 strongly disagreed. Again, this is, this is, these are aggregate results. Question three, teachers and staff in our district PK to 12 have a common set of beliefs about teaching and learning. 4.9% strongly agreed, 68.9% agreed, 23.8 disagreed, 22.4 strongly disagreed. And then the final question, we have a well-defined socio-emotional program that supports students and also holds us accountable for their behavior. 2.2% agreed, 33%, excuse me, 2.2% strongly agreed, 33% agreed, 51.1 disagreed, and 13.7% strongly disagreed. And we'll be doing some more disaggregation by building teachers, what teachers said versus support staff and so on. Bottom line is, on all these four questions, the, the number of individuals who responded strongly, strongly agree is fairly small. If you look at agree and strongly agree together, it's a little bit, a little bit stronger, you know, hitting over 50% with the exception of question four, which clearly is over to the other side of the spectrum, that's the socio-emotional support, with 51% disagreeing and 13% strongly disagreeing. So, this is the, this is the kind of data we'll collect on a regular basis, we'll ask these same four questions coming in the school year, and going forward, and again, to get a, get a sense of at least where people are, whether they, they see a clear vision, whether they see a clear path, if they, where they, they see if we're progressing in these four areas. And actually, the three questions lying directly to, again, I think the three, the three, the three areas, the three, the big three that I outlined a few weeks ago, and that is moving forward, the socioemotional education, making sure that we have shared beliefs about teaching and learning, about how we interact with kids, how we individualize instruction and so on, and finally, developing a well-defined socio-emotional program. Communication plan, I said at the last meeting, that we'll be doing some work on that, we don't, we don't have a plan at this point, but we're working on it, met the principles, talk about how we broaden existing groups. We have, we have two, we have two groups of parents that routinely meet at the buildings, Friends of Lakeway, Crusader Pride, those two groups do a lot of good work with programs to support schools, to support activities, not just athletic activities, but other activities as well. But we may need to think about expanding beyond that or finding other ways to interact with the community. The other thing that we looked at is administrative team a few weeks ago, is a product that Dale and his technology committee will be looking at next week, which allows us to send information out in a variety of formats, but, but all kinds of information regarding video of events that are happening along with schedule with announcements, and that's a product, like I said, that the technology committee will be looking at next week, and we'll be going forward with that. I think that it's, it's, you know, it's sort of, it's reflective of the world we live in, people are used to things being delivered and, and not going to the website, you know, a lot of people go, do go to websites for information. We need also to push more information out and probably broaden what we're doing. This morning, I went over to, to visit a few classes, was able to spend some time with about 18 students here, first period, that were here from our Region 3 schools. They were, those were students who are in our teacher ed program, four or five of those, that about, about four or five were second-year students, the rest were first-year students, kind of like, I got a sense of the, of the mix. So, I was asked if I'd mind conducting a building tour, which I did with them, took them around, and I guess several things struck me. One thing that struck me was the fact that our, that the lower level there, the CTC was, those classrooms had a lot of students, and, you know, I guess about 120 all total in that area.
Student.
Yeah, maybe a few more than that. The rooms were very full. So, many, many of the schools in Region 3 are sending students here first period to take advantage of those programs and classes and us growing, and that's a good thing, it's a good thing to see, and that's despite the fact that the overall numbers of students is going down. So, while overall enrollment's going down, I think in general, Region 3, that particular program's going up, and I know we'll, we'll have a number of our students also going out to our Region 3 partners to take advantage of the, those opportunities. And we went through the rest of the building, I think it was, it was, it was great to show off the school a little bit, even, even though we've been there for a few days now, school looks great, kids were impressed with the, with the school, I think they were impressed by how quiet it was, several of them mentioned that when they go down the hallways, it's quiet, and things, they liked it, were impressed with the fact that things were happening in the classroom. And then finally, Al was going to talk to you just a little bit, speaking a little bit more about CTC, night programs, some of the things that he's looking at there for this year, so.
Just quickly, just so you, just so you know, we are partnering again with White Mount Community College to offer an evening course for adults and students that they so wish to take a class in manufacturing. So, we've been working over the summer with local manufacturers to develop a course very similar to last year, an intro to manufacturing, if you will, which would be taught by a teacher from the community college, and that will happen on Wednesday nights. And then hopefully, with, if the enrollment's good, again, working with the community colleges, I mean, working with the industry partners, developing a more advanced manufacturing course. If you speak with anybody in the area from manufacturing, it's, it's an aging workforce that's going to see a huge turnover in the next three to five years. So, having a workforce ready to go in and occupy those, those positions is something worth working for us. And this, again, is part of the work we've been doing with that, with that grant opportunity we had a couple of years ago, working with NCIC, working with certainly industrial part to, to bring these programs for students. industrial part to, to bring these programs for students and to those. So just so you know, that's going, hopefully starting next week.
Thank you. Okay, this is the end of our session, so we can detain the mission when we want to go.
I'll get there, hold on.
Please wait by.
I'll make a motion entering to non-public session under paragraph two, section three of the R S A ninety-one eight point three right to the law. Or number two, the hiring of any person who's a public employee. Number three, matters that would adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of the board. Taking with us the superintendent?
Yep, to the administrator's president and... He's the administrator. Yeah.
All right, we'll hear a second. Second, or follow?
Break.
John Nelson? Here we go.